Chairperson talking to be here, either is everyone's here that's coming. So if you join me in a pledge of allegiance, it would be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Karen, with the massive audience we have, can anybody fill out a comment form? If no one filled out that comment form, I guess, Dr. Andre, I should turn to you because the focus of this workshop is the PARC presentation and you and our assistant superintendent can take over from here.
Thank you, Mrs. Silva. At this point, I'll get to the superintendent, so I want to see the superintendent, Elliot Sandau, who's going to briefly go over the PARC results and then again put in perspective of what is the background of the PARC test, some of the district results, school-wide results, and then talk about our next steps.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mrs. Sandau.
Okay.
So this evening, as Dr. Andre said, we'll review the results that we've received. We'll also give you some up-to-date information on other initiatives related to PARC. So why don't we begin, and hopefully this will work from here. There we go. So the first slide is really just a reminder of the transition to the PARC assessment, beginning with the Common Core standards, and then full implementation of the standards in 2013-14, and then our first administration of PARC during the 2014-15 school year. And the results were received in December. Student reports have been shared with families. Administrators and teachers are currently working.
Experiencing technical difficulties.
Yes. Was that?
Yep.
So nationally, eighty percent of students took the assessment electronically and twenty percent did it through paper. In Bristol Warren, we were a hundred percent online. And also, I wanted to just point out that Rhode Island was heavily involved in setting up the scoring processing framework. And we also had a member of our district, Dr. DiBiase, who was involved in setting the national levels for proficiency for math at the high school level. Next, we'll take a broad look at the participation rate in Rhode Island. The overall participation rate of students who were tested for English Language Arts was ninety percent, and mathematics, it was ninety-one percent. As with most states, there was a decline as we moved up in the grade levels. And Bristol Warren, our overall participation rate was ninety-point-four-five percent in ELA and ninety-one-point-seven-seven in mathematics. And again, similar to the state, we saw a decline in participation at the high school level. So next, we'll take a deeper look here, we'll look at the participation rates by school. So overall, we felt that participation rates were very high. There was the decline at the high school, and there were a number of factors related to that that we've been working on, meeting with the high school, and seeing what can be done differently this year. So what we don't know at this point is what the impact of participation rates will be on our school rankings. So the federal law requires schools to have ninety-five percent participation in state assessments, and not all of our schools were there. But at this point, the only consequence is that the school will not be eligible to be listed as a commended school. I checked into RIDE this morning, and they're still waiting for any additional information beyond that.
A question. The decline in the high school, was that due to parents opting out?
It was due to parents opting out, but there were a number of factors that we think were influencing that, such as technology difficulties and scheduling issues. So those are things that we've been working on to make the situation better.
Okay. So have we taken care of the policy that there is no opt-out?
Right, it's our expectation that students would just...
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Mrs. Saviano?
Yes, thank you. My question to you is, we did more participation on the English Language Arts. Am I correct?
Yes, what we think that might be is some students may not have taken all of the mathematics assessments. So you have a student who's there for all of the testing for ELA, but then during the math assessment, they didn't complete all of the sections, for whatever reason, if they, because they were out sick or couldn't retake, then that's why those numbers might be different.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So taking another look at the results, we want to make sure that we're thinking of these results as a baseline for improvement. We know that they may have been impacted by participation rates, as we just said, student effort, scheduling, it being our first time giving the assessment, there was a lot that we needed to learn, and then also students adjusting to a new computer-delivered assessment. So those are some factors that we feel may have impacted the results. At this point in time, we know that PARC results will not be used for teacher evaluation or for student graduation decisions until 2021. So I think everyone's realizing that we need time to get used to the assessment and to really see what our current results are.
It's my understanding that the elementary scores in South Kingston were very good, one of the best in the state. And the thinking behind that is that they did not use computers. What are we thinking about for this year in regard to elementary? Are we dedicated to computer use, or are we going to do something differently?
The state has looked at the differences in scores between paper and online, and they can't find any definite patterns to say that that was a difference. South Kingston does typically score very high, so whether or not it was strictly because they did it on paper, we can't say that. There were other districts that did their assessment on paper and didn't do as well. We are committed to the online testing for a couple of reasons. One is that it really is a skill that students need to be able to do. And secondly, paper is now is an option, but districts will have to pay for it, and it will be approximately ten dollars per student if you choose to take paper.
I just want a follow-up. So do we know if South Kingston's elementary schools are going to take the test using paper, or are they going to go on the computer this year?
I don't know that.
Mr. Chair, may I, with all the respect to my peers, I'd like to hear the whole conversation, conversations about how South Kingston, and really I am seeing, and I appreciate the question, but I'm trying to follow along, and I think these side questions might actually, you know, we may be able, may get to those questions, and so, Mr. Chair, I wonder if we might be able to hold questions until the end unless they're really clarifying questions.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. I'd like a clarifying question.
Can he answer my question first?
One of the things I would ask, please, though, is she may actually be answering your question a little bit later in her presentation. So if you wait until she's done, maybe know to your question, I'm sure that our assistant superintendent would be happy to go back and revisit an area if she's already gone through it, didn't answer your question. So at least I find that a lot of times when I look through things, the questions I have at the beginning are answered somewhere in the middle or at the end. So if we give her a chance to look through it and wait for it to answer some of those. Do you have something else, Mr. Saviano? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Diane, my question to you, I went through this afternoon, and I noticed that Lincoln, Johnston, and Coventry were being compared to them. Now, is there a particular reason? Is there some sort of relationship there that it would be those three districts rather than three other districts?
Well, I will, when I get to that slide, I was going to mention that those three districts are demographically similar to Bristol Warren. So at the state level, they often will get how districts compare to other districts with similar demographics. You're welcome. And I do have a point at the end of this, in the middle, after the ELA results, we will stop, and if you have questions at that point, I'm happy to address them. So the next slide is really to get us to think about the performance levels that are being used in PARC. There are five performance levels. Level one does not meet, level two is partially meets, level three is approaching the expectations, level four meets expectations, and level five exceeds. In addition to that, PARC also gives us what's referred to as scale scores that range from six-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred-and-fifty, and it represents a student's overall performance in both ELA and mathematics. The scale scores are useful to capturing changes in performance over time, and also it gives you a clearer picture of really where the student falls within that continuum, because they may be a very high four or a very low two. So the number is very helpful in schools in understanding more about where the student lies within that range. And then in addition to that, the scores are then broken down by subclaims or major categories that provides for the deeper understanding of the student's score. So when we look at the ELA assessment, this is an overview of what is being assessed. There are five focus areas in reading, reading literature, reading informational text, vocabulary, written expression, and writing conventions. And these are consistent across grades three through ten. And then the student's score report also breaks it down into these subclaim areas. So just a big picture of the ELA results in Rhode Island. And then we'll look at performance by grade level on the next screen. So as you can see, in Rhode Island, there were approximately thirty-six percent of students who met or exceeded the expectations. So this means that there were thirty-six percent of students who achieved either a level four or a level five on the assessment. Rhode Island found that performance was fairly even across grade levels. There was a slight dip at the high school in performance, but again, as we noticed earlier, there was also a dip in participation at the high school level. The state also found that there was wide variability in performance across districts. In Bristol Warren, overall, for ELA, we had forty-point-nine-five students need or exceed the expectations. And on the screen, we then have it broken down by elementary overall performance at forty-four-point-six, middle school forty-three-point-two, and high school twenty-seven-point-nine. So now we'll take a look at what it actually looks at at each grade level. So this slide is for the state results, and it not only shows you by grade level the number of the percentage of students who met or exceeded the expectations, but then it breaks it down by the percentage of students at each level of proficiency. And as we look at, it's really important to be looking at what percentage of students are at the lowest level, and how do we move those to this up to the higher level. And now we'll look at it with the Bristol Warren results, and this is the exact same format, where you can see by grade level, and then you can see the percentage of students at each performance level. So consistently, Bristol Warren was above the state, with the exception of the high school's score. And then one other slide, taking a look at the comparison of Bristol Warren to the state. You can see that Bristol Warren is shown in the lighter blue color. So in addition to the state comparison, as Mr. Saviano referenced, we also did take a look at comparisons to other districts. And again, these were three districts that we are typically compared with due to demographics. There are certainly other districts that we'll be looking at, and schools that we'll be looking at at the school level. There's a tool on the RIDE website that helps us to do that, and also, all of the results are available on the RIDE site, so it is something that we do spend a lot of time looking at. So these three comparison districts are Coventry, Johnston, and Lincoln. And what you're seeing right here are the elementary results. And then this slide represents the middle school results. And lastly, here are the high school results. So that's the big picture of our ELA results. So are there specific questions related to what we discussed so far on the ELA initiative? Is this way, Troy?
Yes. In regard to the high school score, do we have a breakdown as to how the high school did with the subclaim areas?
I don't have that for you this evening, but the high school does have that, and I can get that information for you if you would like.
Okay. Do you know, just again, and I'm sorry that I don't seem to throw this at you, out of those subclaims, which area was the strongest? Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions related to ELA? We can always go back if you have questions further down the road. So we've set the, basically, the math is set up in the same format for you. This is an overview of what's being assessed on the math assessment. The major content area that you see listed there is the first subclaim, and that basically represents the major skills and concepts that are focused on in that grade level. Additional and supporting content areas, those are those things that are instructed and are assessed, but they're not the focus areas for that grade level. And lastly, what you see are two of what we refer to as the mathematical practices, mathematical reasoning, and then modeling and application. And again, those subclaims are consistent across grades K, excuse me, grades three through ten, so that we can really take a look at how our students are doing across each grade level. And the student results are also reported out according to those subclaim areas. So again, big picture of how Rhode Islanders did on the mathematics assessment. About twenty-five percent of students in Rhode Island who we tested met or exceeded the expectations. You'll notice on here a reference to Algebra I, and that's because PARC is different than Kneecap in that at the high school level, the mathematics is broken down by course. Kneecap was one course in grade eleven that encompassed all of the math skills. In PARC, it's Algebra I assessment and then a geometry assessment. And since we have students who take Algebra I in grade eight, their results are broken down into grade eight Algebra I, so a little bit different for us. In Bristol Warren, about thirty-four-point-five-five percent of students overall met or exceeded the expectations. And we had thirty-one percent of our eighth graders who took the Algebra I assessment. So we'll go a little bit deeper with that. Looking specifically at the Algebra I results, twenty-six percent of students at the state level of Algebra, excuse me, took the assessment. And in Bristol Warren, as I said previously, we had thirty-one percent of our students who took the assessment. And it was very interesting across the state to see the differences in those grade eight Algebra I results. They were very high versus the Algebra I results from the high school level. If you think about the types of students who take Algebra I in grade eight, those are the very high achieving students, and others who need more time, they're going to have different results. So that was consistent across the state. So again, here's that same fancy graph with the break down by grade level and by percentage of students at each level. And the next slide that you'll see will be our Algebra I results.
No, you skipped a slide.
Oh, I did skip a slide, thank you. So these are our results, broken down by grade level.
Can you go back to the state? I think that's what you skipped.
Yes. Is it one here? That's interesting. I think we lost this slide somewhere in transition. It should be in the here now that I gave it though.
Yes.
Okay.
We did better.
We did better, yes, in math, yep. Here are, oh, that's interesting. Now I lost my Algebra I. Okay. More technology difficulties here, but in your packet, you will see the Algebra I results after that, and the Algebra I results for Bristol Warren as well. So in grade eight Algebra I, we had seventy-two percent of our students who met or exceeded the expectations for Algebra I. Here it is, right here. Versus at the state level, the average was twenty-five percent of students. So here's the slide again that shows the comparison between the state and Bristol Warren results. Again, Bristol Warren is shown in the lighter blue color. And here are our comparisons to other districts. So our performance was stronger in mathematics. And I think that represents the strong focus on the Common Core math standards that we had at mathematics in recent years and the implementation of our new math curriculum, the work that's been done K through twelve, and really updating our instruction and making sure that we're getting those higher-level thinking skills, mathematical practices in there, and also the focus on assessment and using those assessment results to go back and adjust instruction. And as you, I'm sure you know, this year, we updated our ELA curriculum, and that's being rolled out this year, so we will expect to see increases in our ELA as well. So that was the elementary. Here is the middle school. And here are our high school results, again, in comparison to Coventry, Johnston, and Lincoln. So in addition to looking at comparison to other districts in the state, Rhode Island also looked at the comparison of PARC results to SAT. And so when we think about SAT, the benchmark is associated with a sixty-five percent probability of students who will be successful in obtaining a first-year GPA of a B minus or higher at a four-year college. It indicates students' readiness to enter college or career training programs and to succeed in credit year and college courses. So the SAT results from Rhode Island were similar to our grade eleven PARC results. So, you know, oftentimes we hear people say that PARC is just too hard, it's unreasonable, when in reality, it's very similar to the expectations of SAT, and our results are consistent with that. Another assessment that was looked at by the state was called NAEP, and that stands for the National Assessment of Educational Progress. It's a state that is given, it's an assessment, excuse me, that's given consistently in the United States with representative students from each state and district participating. And so this is a comparison of the NAEP results, and again, you can see that they're very similar to how our students perform on PARC. So in looking at all of this, how can PARC results inform our teaching and learning? As we continue to analyze the results, they'll be used to inform instruction several ways. First of all, families will be able to engage in conversations with their children based on reports that they've received about their progress in school, and also with the teachers to better understand PARC results within the context of other indicators of student learning. So what we're talking about is looking at those PARC results and looking at our classroom assessment data, and teachers and parents being able to have a conversation about students' progress and their learning needs. With teachers, the conversations are about shifts in instruction that they are able to make based on the student assessment results. And for schools, they'll be looking at patterns across cross-grade levels and among student subgroups that will inform instructional decisions. At the district level, it provides us with data so that we can look at patterns which help inform our district curriculum initiatives and the supports and resources that we provide to schools. So we really do get a lot of information from the results, and these are just some of the ways that they'll be used. What's key to remember, though, is that PARC is just one measure among many that define great schools, and one part of a comprehensive assessment system that determines student proficiency and readiness for future learning. And we discuss that within our policy discussion on comprehensive assessment system, although it's only one piece to the picture. At Rhode Island Department of Education, our new commissioner is reminding districts that PARC only measures some of our expectations for students. We should focus on the broader picture of student success and continue to develop our own internal comprehensive assessment system to measure student readiness. So as a district, what our next steps are the following. So we're just rolling out a new tool, it's called a classroom walkthrough tool, and it's a way for us to collect data, it's short snapshots of teaching and learning within classrooms, and it's, we'll be collecting electronically, and it specifically is looking at the alignment of curriculum, instruction, and assessment to the standards. That's one piece. We have standards-based curriculum, we need to make sure that it's being implemented in the classroom. The next piece is that we'll be continuing to analyze our state assessment results and our school assessment results, and providing professional development to advance teaching and learning in both ELA and math. Also, we'll be strengthening our collaboration and expertise of teacher teams and being able to better analyze that data. We're data-rich, there's so much information out there, and a lot of great tools, but do our teachers really have the skills to be able to do that efficiently and effectively to get the most out of it. And next, also strengthening our response to intervention program. So once we identify our student needs, we really need to be taking a look at the services and supports that we're able to provide them with at schools. And lastly, supporting families and better understanding the grade level standards and the expectations so that they can help at home. And we have a number of things that we've been doing in connection to this. On February 5th, we had the Rhode Island Department of Education coming in for professional development around English Language Arts and going deeper with the expectations, and we have several participants who'll be joining us for that. We also have the work that Mrs. Anderson has been spearheading through the National Center on Intensive Intervention and strengthening our RTI process and supports for students. And then also, our math coaches have been doing a lot of work around the district and analyzing data and providing instructional supports for teachers. And they've also held several family math nights explaining the Common Core standards and strategies, and how it's very different from the mathematics that we learned when we were all young. So this work goes on, it continues, and also, schools are holding report nights, as I mentioned previously, these are the dates that you have in front of you, and at that time, they'll be able to have smaller conversations with parents about the assessments, about their students' progress, and about their school's progress. So any questions? Mrs. Campbell?
Yes, just a quick one. Slide number, the one where you compared the math with the other districts' middle school, I just wanted to know, that could be algebra scores, or is that just all math?
That, I believe, is just the grade eight math that we pulled as the other out.
And so the algebra is rolled into the high school scores, or is it like not in a comparison chart?
No, it's in the overall, this is my understanding, again, it's all new as far as the accountability at the school level, but I believe that it is rolled in on the middle school scores, since instruction should place there.
So that slide may include the...
It may, now that I say that to you, yes, it may. I'll have to get the clarification on that.
I was gonna say, because if it's rolled into the high school, then the high school score is naturally high.
That would be inflated, yeah. I know that the score does remain with the school, but I'm not sure about this slide here, if it represents that being included. A follow-up on that.
Mark.
Margaret? On the, on the, on the slide about what's being assessed, you talked about assessed by focused, and that slide includes what they're supposed to learn in each grade, addition subtraction. And I wondered what you meant by assessed by focused. Did you mean that that's what the test tested, but that's not necessarily what we focus on in those grades, or vice versa?
No, what that means, that was the focus of the assessment. So for each grade level, they've identified what they refer to as major content, and then there is supporting content, and those are considerations that we looked at when we developed our curriculum. So I apologize if it was a little confusing there, but it's, the intent of the slide was just to show how the components of the Park assessment, and that there are subclaims for major content, and then the supporting, and then the reasoning and the modeling. Not sure if I clarified that.
Yeah, you did. My question, really, that dovetails on that, isn't necessarily answered by Park, but what do we do in those subgroups when we discover that children haven't even begun to achieve that level in the third grade, and we're moving them on to the fourth grade, and they still haven't got the third grade skills? How do we handle them now?
Many of the skills extend over the course of different grade levels, and when we look at our assessment results and we see where students are struggling, that's where teachers would begin looking at small group instruction for those students who are significantly behind and getting them up to speed. We also have the response to intervention program, and I shouldn't call it a program, it's a process, and that's when we would determine that this student needs additional support, whether it be from the classroom teacher or whatever math intervention special, the same thing with reading. So based on the data, we would see what students need, and is it that they just need a little bit more support, or do they need a significant amount of support to get up to grade levels? Our goal would be to get them up to grade level, but obviously, that doesn't always happen, so we continue to monitor this progress. And for some, some students, it might be on a monthly basis where teachers are looking at their data to see if they're able to close that gap and get them up to grade level.
My concern, and this will be my last question, my concern being that if they never quite get there in the third grade, and they finish up the third grade and the fourth grade, but never quite get to the fourth grade, and all of a sudden, by the end of fifth grade, they finally finish in fourth grade, they're getting behind her, this is an example of where they're getting behind her and behind her, Park test would be showing that in those subgroups. So are we looking at that and addressing that, or are we just moving them on and hoping that we can catch them up?
Well, we are looking at the subclaims to inform specifically what that student needs support, but so that's a good thing, that gives us more information than we had before. We have a number of supports and practices in place, and I think what's key that's different now is that we do look at students on a regular basis. I mean, like I said earlier, for some students, it is monthly, and if what the support we're giving isn't helping, then we would intensify that and give them more time, a different approach, access to math specialists, reading specialists, and do our very best to get them up. Because you're certainly right, we don't want, we want to close that gap, we don't want them to continue with that, because then they would never catch up.
Okay.
We love them.
Anyone else?
I want to, everyone else in the chair has a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. The math nights that you mentioned, how, what kind of attendance are we seeing?
Actually, the attendance has been pretty good. I don't have the numbers for you, and I can certainly have the math coaches give us that information. I went to several of them last year, and it was very exciting to see parents come in, and they had teachers who volunteered to be there, and they were at a table with an activity or a game, and they would explain to the parents what they were doing, how this is helpful in the classroom, what skill we're really building, that it's not just about a fun game that they're enjoying, that we're focused on developing place value or fluency and addition and subtraction. And then in addition to that, they had a table with information, and pretty much the message is, you know, this is how math is different now, and these are what some of those terms mean that you're hearing your child talk about and come home with. So very successful. We'd always like to see more families, but we caught on, and we actually served pizza at one of the last ones, and did it in conjunction with Ms. Almeida's Title I meeting. So that was, we're learning, so we're always trying to increase that parent engagement base.
Are we, again, I'm just curious, do we know whether or not some of the students that are at risk were seeing their parents come, or do we even have any of that information? Because I know in the past, it's always the kids who are doing really well, the parents are the ones that are involved, they're the ones going to the parent-teacher conferences, especially in older grades. I'm just curious.
Just, you know, the feedback that I received from the math coaches was that they were very happy with the turnout, and that they did see a lot of families who they had hoped to see there. So it wasn't necessarily always the high achieving parents, it was, or parents of students who were high achieving, but it was a very well-rounded group of parents. And then also, as you know, through our strategic planning process, we'll be developing some videos for parents as well, kind of helping them to better understand the types of learning that is taking place in schools today.
The special report nights, who will be heading that up? Each principal?
The principals, yes. I believe Colton Andrews, they've already had theirs. So yes, the principals are handling this as well, and reported that it was very successful, great conversations. So we just have to keep the communication going for parents and make sure that they have access to the information that they need and that they want.
Do you know how many parents attended?
I don't know. Do you know that, Dr. Arndt?
She said it, there was about fifty parents. Yeah, so again, it was a very successful night. The reason why we're having the school report nights as opposed to having all the schools here is more about that personalization. Families want to, we need to build that trust up between the families so that they can understand what the Park results mean, what it means for their child and what this instruction requires. And that's a much more engaging kind of conversation than just going over, they have that one report at the school committee, talking about all the schools. So that's really a way for us to bolster our participation again for next year, as you saw at the elementary level, our participation rates were really, they were generally high. So for those few families who didn't have to test, it's a conversation with the principal, what does it mean, what were the results, and how do we move forward? Just one kind of caveat on the math nights, on our district webpage, there's actually a new link for math resources, and some of the pictures are from our previous math nights. So you can see the parents working with the teachers and the kids involved, so it's nice. It just came out today, ironically, so it's a new website.
I have just one last question. With Commissioner Wagner's goals for the state, their education, has he talked about at what point we're going to begin to look at Rhode Island's Park scores compared to the other states' scores?
I know that they have been looking at that, and that information is available on the websites of the other states, and some of the states are very comparable to Rhode Island's. Massachusetts was slightly higher, but certainly not at the high levels that they had seen with NCAS. So I'm sure that as the months go on, we'll be having more information from RYE as they go deeper with their analysis at the national level as well.
But in Massachusetts, the high school is not using Park, correct? They're using the NCAS?
It's, again, not an expert, but it's my understanding, the latest news that I heard was that Massachusetts is developing a new assessment that will incorporate many of the tasks from Park.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Campbell?
Actually, this is a question for Leslie. I triggered a thought when Mrs. Almeida was talking about parents, and I know that at the high school level, we have many students who don't have parents, they're in social service, they're in the guise of social services, they're maybe in homes and other things, or being raised by grandparents or other guardians. What, are social services organizations involved so much? I mean, I know they're focused really on making sure the kids have food and clothing and a roof over their heads in some cases, but are they also engaged at the educational level just to make sure these kids are getting the support they need at that level when they're not in school?
So I would say that we have participation from each guardian as appropriate, be it, you know, a placement in a group home, or an educational advocate, or, you know, whoever may be in charge, so to speak, of that student, and that each team has been working with students and readying themselves to even the SAT, whatever it may be, whatever their plan is for transition, and as well in their participation in Park, that our teams do engage the appropriate guardian to help us motivate all students. So I think that's the best answer that I can give you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the presentation information, and I'm sure you'll keep us informed as we
Denise, we, our children also took NECA this year in science, and interestingly enough, if I'm speaking correctly, we had hundred percent participation in the science NECA break. Are we gonna take science NECA next year? Surprise, surprise. Thanks.
All right, well, Denise, will anybody like?
I'll make a motion for adjournments.
I'll second it.
The motion made, by Mrs. Campbell, by Mrs. McBride, all opposed. The I have a meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.